Ready? All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Eagle City Council Meeting, June 14th, 2022, starting at 5:30 PM. If we can get a roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
All right, if everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, does anybody have any addition to legions or modifications to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to reports. Council members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ginsburg.
Just a quick report for the Historic Preservation Commission at last June, uh, last week on June 8th. Just a couple of quick updates. Again, Family Fun Day is going to just do the Saturday portion of that, and they'll have about five to six hundred of the little bell shakers that they do to hand out to the kids, get everybody to come over. So again, just, they'll just stick with representing on Saturday. And then as far as their new business, they had Pleasant View School, one-room schoolhouse, which they had mentioned that you had some interest in. There was a 1,800 school that is not on the register, but they have a big spinner, one of those merry-go-round things that's, um, that is there on the property and possibly of interest, so they're gonna look into that and seeing about having that as it's original to the schoolhouse. So just an update on that.
Very nice. Councilman Pike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had two meetings. One was the Eagle Senior Center yesterday and, uh, I'm sorry, today. And yesterday was this Eagle Sewer District. And they are working, the sewer district first, they've got all their new staff together. And Lynn Moser retired as the general manager, and Neil, and I'm forgetting Neil's last name, but they have a new general manager, and he took over officially yesterday. And they are working on their budget, they're actually under budget. And also, one of the things, they've only used, utilized 159 permits out of the 500 that they've, um, expecting, year-to-date so far. And the last thing is, they had a high, um, discharge that goes to Boise for final treatment, um, through their new sewer ponds and distribution center, um, of 71,000 basically gallons, um, that got sent to Boise, um, which was a little bit higher than normal. And Sundays seem to be the high number of, um, most utilized date of need. For some reason, they're looking into why that's different now. But the last thing is, I did ask them about the path along the river, and I need to have more clarification with you on that, the pathway there. Neil asked if I can get more from you, and I said, of course. And then, um, updates on any, and this might be for Bill, updates on any development delays. Are there any delays that are coming through, that developments that have come through the city? They just want to have a parallel knowledge if there's anything coming through that has a delay factor to it. So I could work with you tomorrow, the next day, and get that. Um, then we move on to the Senior Center, our meeting this morning. We're gonna work on a little bit of an outreach program, trying to utilize some cards to get, uh, more seniors, uh, involved with the center itself and knowing about the center. Um, and then we also, Helen and I are collaborating our efforts through the Valley Regional Transportation side and the Senior Center side, and I'll let Helen speak to the VRT portion of it. But, um, we're waiting for next fiscal budget. Eric, I think the, the, that's when we're gonna discuss the, the flooring installation. And then also, I'm gonna reach out to the, um, American Legion and see what their schedule is, as far as, um, expansion of remodeling, and so we can time that all together if there's some, so we'll collaborate some effort. And I might ask Eric if I can have a phone call with him and you and the American Legion people and see where we're at with that. So, um, I'll pass that other part over to Helen, but that's all I have for tonight on that.
Councilmember Russell.
Yes, um, VRT has started the new software training and software setup at the Senior Center. It will be a new app-based system that also has the ability to, for phone-in requests for rides, for their ride-share program. And, um, their plan is to go live in August, and then around September, October, to expand it into the other portions of Ada and Canyon County. So that's exciting, and hopefully will be helpful, um, to make their transportation system run more smoothly. Also had a discussion with the board, not regarding any transportation issues, but helping them to, uh, guide them to set up some personnel policies there that are much needed, related to compensation, performance review, paid time off, as well as some safety training that needs to be done. Just giving them some direction on how to set up some policies and, and make those more formal. And then in addition to that, some financial budgeting help and an audit of past practices so that they can see where they're, they're truly at for this next budgeting year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Bond.
Mr. Mayor. Um, on that one question for Senior Center relative to, I think that was one of the biggest things we identified is the funding sources and business plan. Um, do they, you guys gapple, I mean, you mentioned earlier relative to the outreach component, um, getting more seniors in. Um, so I'm assuming they're looking at potential fee shifts, um, different outsourcing that we could use, the city can help out with, what?
Hopefully, in the future, those are going to be addressed. There seems to be such a large list of things that they need help with, that we're, we're trying to tackle some things right now that seem to be very immediate. And until they have their budgeting and even understand what's being charged, what account, we don't know where they're at. So we're gonna start with that.
Mr. Mayor, further for Councilmember Bond. Charlie, they, they do have over a hundred new applicants, they have hundred membership, a hundred-plus membership now. So we're looking at also sponsorships too, for some of the people that can't afford to participate there. But they, they saw they were increasing to a point, but we gotta be very careful with getting too many. And it's a, it's a fine line between that, but we are working on that, so.
Mr. Mayor, just a, so is it still $5 per year, or is it $5 per month?
No, it's an annual.
So it is $5 per year, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, Councilman Bond, you have any reports? No? All right. All right, staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you an update. You'll be receiving, um, an email from me shortly, in which you'll be getting your paired comparison for the capital maintenance plan for you. And I just wanted to kind of review how this works, um, just so if you have any kind of, as you're not going in cold, I will send you a kind of a list of instructions that come with it. But you will receive an, uh, this spreadsheet, you will need to download it to your computer and save it with your name. So when it comes back to me, I know it's yours. Otherwise, they'll all look exactly the same, but slightly different. So, um, the way this works is it's a head-to-head comparison of each project, one against the other. I will warn you, there are 57 projects. This will take a little bit of time. Um, if you click on the, the, a white square, there are gray squares, you can ignore the gray squares, you don't need to do those ones, you're only gonna do the ones that are white. Um, you'll find here that there is a down arrow in the bottom right-hand corner, you will click it. And it should appear in which the left-hand column is the top answer, and the top column is actually the bottom answer. And what you will do is, you will decide which of these two projects are the most important to you, and you will select that item. That's all you have to do, quite honestly, but you have to do it multiple times. As you scroll, you'll see the top, um, the left column, two columns actually do not move, and similarly, the top two columns don't move. So you can always be using this top, uh, left corner to kind of guide where you're at. You do need to fill out all, all the white squares. One of your ways of knowing that you've done it is, you actually will be able to see over here, oh, I didn't do it. Um, it should be totaling, actually, let me see, let me go back. It should be totaling, because I'm off. There we go. Um, it'll total how many times you've selected the column on the, the item on the left. So you kind of have a tracking mechanism for, um, how you voted. So you can see there, it tells you you voted for, uh, the IT Chambers audio recording request as once. So, same as last year, I do recommend you saving as you go, and I do recommend going row by row, so working yourself from left to right in each row, so you don't miss anything. Um, when you send it back to me, I'll notice if it's missing, because I'll know what the numbers are supposed to add up to. It is over 1,100 entries, just to let you know, but it really is just a click. So I do recommend you saving it, um, as you go, but it really is as simple as just clicking, and it will automatically appear your results. So, um, our goal is to try and get these back in the next week to 10 days, if possible. Um, you know, watch a show, it's not that, but if you have questions, let me know. The goal is, again, we'll accumulate these, and then we'll be able to come back to you with a weighted score of how you felt about each of the projects as we start to populate the 23 to 27, uh, capital maintenance plan. Well, doing maintenance first, obviously, because that's your number-one priority according to our cap, our capital plan, um, well, you'll be seeing one for, uh, capital projects shortly, and we're working on it as we speak. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor. Yep, Councilman Bond.
Nicole, can you zoom out to just show everybody the entire thing looks like?
It's not all of it. That's it?
No, it goes way bigger than that. Yes. I'd just like to show everybody exactly.
I've reduced it in half, because you only have to sell half the cells. But it is, it is, and I will say, um, capital maintenance is becoming more robust, you're gonna see that there's new projects in there, they've been identified if they're new or not. Um, your capital projects list will be very similar, um, to this, so just to be clear. But we only do it once a year.
Councilman Pike.
All right, Nicole, um, yeah, I'm looking forward to this. The number across, because last year, there, we, we did, it's easy to miss some squares. So either, is there gonna be like, there's, say there's 15 across the thing, well, let's say, like, you've only done nine out of 15?
It will add up to 1,147 squares entered.
Yeah, but I mean, each, each line, however many lines there are.
It doesn't, it depends on how you do it, because if I go back over here, and I choose instead of Chamber Recording, and I choose, um, Heritage Park Renovation, you have to now go down here. It won't show up in that row as a total, because it goes to the row that it's actually being selected for.
Okay.
Um, so not ideal, I understand. It's very, this is very simplified compared to what it could be. So trying to make it as easy as possible for you guys. Um, if you have questions, let me know. If it comes back to me and it's not done, I'll, I'll flag it and let you know, and I'll reach out to you and just say, hey, here are the ones I need to know about. Okay?
Okay.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other staff? Nope? City Attorney? Nope? All right. Item six, presentation. Item A, Fiber Optic Project Update, presentation provided by Public Works Director Eric Zieggenfuss.
Mayor and Council, if you need any guidance on that maintenance project, you just let me know. No.
Shop, shop, shop.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I was asked to give you a quick update on where we're at with the city fiber optic, so buckle up, here we go. So to give you a quick reminder, Council, um, allocated $3 million towards the fiber optic network, uh, that's where we kind of started. The city then contracted with Entry Point and Biari for engineering services on the 21st of, uh, whatever month that is, September, to, to conduct a feasibility study and to conduct a public survey. On, uh, from January to March, on 2022, the city completed the public survey, we got about 1,100 responses. Obviously, this was a positive response. Moving forward from there, we allocated 1.5 million out of that 3 million to start purchasing equipment to install the infrastructure. Council then adopted ordinance 864, thanks to planning and zoning, declaring fiber to be a public utility within the city of Eagle. Um, also, Council has approved purchases that are still somewhat in the works of conduit, boxes, conduit, boxes and vaults needed to begin, um, construction for, for the fiber system.
We just go back real, I just wanna, it was actually, uh, October 21st of 2021. So just to make sure if anybody in the public wanted to know, yep.
Maybe I'm a little nervous, sir.
That's okay, worry about it.
Here's some pictures to put with what you guys spent some money on, that's been deemed the land of misfit toys out there. So we have a, uh, a lime-boring machine, we bought a mini excavator, backhoe, there's a dump truck, but, uh, we purchased also an equipment trailer, back truck, and also a box truck. All of these were used, I guess, so we kind of scoured the country for these things, and they came from all the way from Illinois, California, um, all over. We participated in some auctions, and so, uh, I think we, we did pretty good. One of the things I wanted to touch on, um, a lot of this stuff we used with our consulting firm and learned from other municipalities, the mistakes that they made in sizes of equipment, or maybe if like, for an example, the box truck, we wanted to get that because when we put our mud mixer in there and things, we can drill during the wintertime, and we're not losing product, where we have to drain it out, we can actually heat that box and we can keep it for the next day of drilling. So there was some consulting, it wasn't just us kind of willy-nilly all over buying equipment. So, um, how much did it cost us? Dump truck, equipment trailer, mini excavator, lime-boring machine, um, like I said, the backhoe, box truck, two rail trailers, a splicing trailer, uh, those were not pictured, I guess, on there, there's only so much room. So allocated funds, 1.5 million, we spent 665,000 so far, what's remaining is 834,000 out of that fund. Like I said, we shopped pretty hard for this equipment, try and get the best deal that we could. Things that are still on the shopping list, some ribbon splicers, uh, loose tube splicers, some miscellaneous fiber tools, cable puller, we put in there some from shipping of miscellaneous equipment or whatever we have to buy, some repair equipment, and there's, now this is what's left over, $342,000. We're probably gonna have some leftover funds in this. Um, obviously, as we go through, like I said, we're, we're getting advice from our consultants, it's just not buy what we want.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bond.
So Eric, on this list of equipment you have right now, um, the city owns that, and so it will not be exclusively used for this project, we could use it for other projects as well, so that increases our ability to do a lot more projects in-house.
Councilman Bond, that is correct. We, uh, I guess to elaborate a little bit more on that with going through the budgets, I guess, this year and next year, we've worked out a program to where other departments in the city, um, can use that equipment, I guess, in kind of an internal rental agreement. Like mini excavator can be used not just in the fiber optic, but in public works, with the water department, or Parks and Rec, go dig a whole program or something, and we, obviously, that'll fund back into the fiber optic program. But we've already used some of this equipment as an example to prep for the summertime, we've used the back truck to clear out vaults, we've used the backhoe up in the bike park for the new trail that's there, uh, the backhoe we've used at the Jackson House, I mean, all, all sorts of projects.
Mr. Mayor. So Eric, you mentioned earlier that a potential like, uh, a rental fee for other, are we currently doing that now, or are we tracking? It would be really nice to, if there was a way, one, we can track that, because that offsets.
Correct.
In addition to not only that you guys are, uh, the stuff you're, you're buying is at a great rate, but that also is offsetting other charges that we get, so it's a cumulative effect.
It is being tracked as far as an hour, and also the maintenance and everything, as far as the cost that'll repay that fund.
Right, perfect, thanks.
Yep, Councilman Pike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric, also, so the, the balance that we have in excess, that could be utilized for the maintenance of those, that, that equipment then, can we have it into a maintenance fund, or are we waiting for like, in need of another purchase, or are we gonna, how we gonna allocate that?
Councilman Pike, um, I believe that because it's allocated, correct me if I'm wrong here, but because it's allocated to equipment purchase, that we use those funds just specifically for that equipment, and once we've bought everything that you guys have kind of gave us permission for, we will have to come back and reallocate that for another use, or put it back into that initial, uh, $3 million allocation.
Because I was just wondering if that would be a place that those, those funds could be utilized, especially if, you know, anything could break, brand-new or, or used, but, I mean, we would have something in line to help offset, uh, you know, an, an X piece of equipment, so.
So just as a clarification, um, all the dollars that were in the capital plan for fiber. Sorry, Eric was barking me. All the dollars that were allocated in the capital plan for fiber are all ARPA dollars, if you remember correctly, that was the funding source. So they've retained in the ARPA funding source files, uh, in that line item, they aren't in cap, they were put in capital, but they're sub-item of capital. So while you've earmarked them and said, yes, you can go spend these dollars, they haven't left the fund, they're still there. And so we, um, it would just be a matter of saying, we've extended, we've exhausted what we need to purchase, and now how do we reallocate it? It's, it's, it's really a documentation issue on our side, it really has nothing to do with moving them from fund to fund.
Councilman Pike, to elaborate a little bit more on that, for the maintenance of the equipment, and obviously the upkeep, fuel and everything, we are formatting a budget, I guess, because obviously this is a new thing to the city, to allocate for that stuff with this fund, so it's a little bit more broken out.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on, so engineering, so like I said, mentioned earlier, we entered into an agreement with Entry Point and Biari. And some of the highlights of what they've been working on is citywide high-level design, this moved from a feasibility study, it, they, I'm sorry, they started with a feasibility study and then moved into a high-level design, uh, where they're working on actually kind of a map, if you will, of what to install, connecting every city address, supporting new developments, and, um, informs costs and modeling of the best use of tax dollars. So to break that down a little bit more in-depth, they have helped us with what we're gonna do with developments as they come in. Uh, we've developed internally of how we handle that with planning and zoning, they come and bring us shade files and things of their development, we put in our own GIS, we send them off to our engineer, which would be Biari, and all that, and that, and it's entered into the master plan, which we'll get to further in the presentation, and then we move forward. Also with this process, to elaborate a little bit more, we kind of caught some of these developments midstream, if you will, of everything, there was a letter that went out to developers asking them if they would voluntarily join us, as far as in our fiber optic system, and they came and reported back and said, yes, sir, what, what do we need to do? Started on that, and then moving forward, any new development that comes in, it is, it is in their, um, I'm lost in words here, it is in their development agreement as far as having the infrastructure put in. Also, design highlights, there's over, over 12,000 demand points through the system, there's over 1.6 million feet of conduit to be installed, multiple fiber access locations, there's more than six, if I believe, if I remember right, thousands of fiber optic splicing enclosures, and over 10 million feet of cable. Now, this is a bit, these are big numbers, right? So this is a complete build-out of the whole system. So, um, obviously, that'll take multiple years to do and mo, and over multiple phases. So, like I said, um, some additional items we're going, is going over, integrate new developments in, working with new developments to ensure the city infrastructure's size for growth, uh, a little bit more further in the weeds. This, uh, this obviously has us change different sizes of conduit, right? Main trunk lines that go down like floating feather, Eagle Road and all that, so this is an important item to far as in the engineering side of it, they're working through. Procure network equipment, IT Department, they've been shopping all over the place to look for what we're gonna put in these fiber huts to make this thing work. I believe that they've been working with our consultant too, for best reliability and also the best price and stuff. And then also, we've been approached by other IP providers, as far as, you know, actual like CenturyLink and things like that, that came to us that want to actually use our infrastructure to feed to the city. So we, we've worked with them to try and come to us, but we've, we've also been contacted by multiple around the state, and also nationwide, that want to be on our system, so that's a big part of it. Master plan, so we have actually received a draft of the master plan, we're making more changes to it, where, and soon as the changes will be made, we'll be presenting that to you for adoption. Uh, we got a lot of red ink on that thing, and we're just going kind of back and forth to fine-tune it. With that, there'll be a fee schedule, obviously, to go over, that we'll adopt and, and go forth. Staffing, so, um, through the consultant, through Clerk's Office and the city, we actually have the wage factoring done, job descriptions that are completed, it's been found that we're gonna need three positions to start construction. Uh, we have that all, all ready to go with our, I guess, Clerk's Office, also our, our temp agencies that we advertise positions with. The biggest thing is we're waiting on materials. Materials, you know, we have to have something for these positions to do, and we have equipment, but we just don't have materials to put in the ground to get this thing going. Some funding and materials, so, uh, FY '22, you guys budgeted $3 million out of ARPA. Equipment purchases were 834,000. Materials that are ordered so far, it's $55,000 in material, we spent $200,000 in engineering, $8,000 in legal. So at this point, we spent 1 point, or 1 million, a little over 1 million, 1.1 million, so we have 1.9 million dollars still remaining in that 3 million bucks. That is where we're at. Lastly, materials, this has been a challenge, to put it lightly. As you know, ARPA, every city is putting in broadband, there's broadband going across the nation. We have had all sorts of things, from ordering vaults to having a hold time or a order time of two years, as far as when they're actually gonna get things to us, 18 weeks, we've had everything from six months, all over the place. So the other thing is bidding this material out, wow, to get actually three bidders to material, or to give us a formalized bid, it's tough. Um, we, we spend a lot of time trying to track down, um, wholesale houses and things for this stuff. So where we're at is conduit is on order, it's actually, that was at $55,000, that was approved, so when it gets here, we have eight rolls of conduit that will be sitting there. Right now, with vaults, we're in the bidding process, we've had a little bit of challenges with that, because the larger vaults that we're having in our plan, they are two years out before they can deliver any of them to us, and this is through multiple vendors. So we're trying to change that order around a little bit to where, you know, we can get them here in a respectable time. Planning and zoning, uh, and the fiber side of things, we're working on fiber huts, that, uh, we've had some examples, planning and zoning, uh, or I'm sorry, I've been working with Barb and obviously Bill with them to try and standardize what we're gonna build. This is another thing, if, uh, when we started looking into this, we visited Mountain Home, obviously Ammon and things, and they buy used communication huts from across the nation, uh, well, that, that was fine and dandy a couple of years ago, now you can't find them. So when you go and buy a new one, or try and get a bid, they are two to three years out to deliver a fiber hut. So what we're finding is that other municipalities and things are actually building them, like a stormor shed, and actually building, the stick building them instead of out of like aggregate concrete. I give Barbara a hard time, because she loves the exposed aggregate outside. Um, so that's where we're at on that. And, uh, obviously, shopping for fiber splicing machines, we've had a couple of, um, tool distributors come in and, and actually demonstrate what we want, and, uh, these are kind of a funny deal, once you make your decision on one, you kind of have to stick with it, because you train staff on it and everything, so we're trying to make the best decision that we can on that. And that is what I have in short. I stand for questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Bond.
So Eric, relative to that master plan, uh, what's kind of timeframe where we see kind of a master plan concept map, literally a map that we can look at to see where are we currently, where are we going in years one, two, and three, years four, five, and six, something like that?
Councilman Bond, we actually have been through this process, we have maps, I guess, that show us this and everything. We, uh, aren't at the final stages quite yet of total build-out, because one, developments keep coming in, and so that changes, obviously, through it all. Uh, but I imagine a master plan as far as the phasing and everything, we're hoping end of June, early July, and then we'll have it in front of you.
Thanks. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Zieggenfuss, appreciate it. All right, item seven, uh, public comment. The, this time is reserved for the public to address their elected officials regarding concerns or comments they would like to provide to the city council regarding subjects not on the agenda. At times, the city council may seek comments, opinions regarding specific city batters during this allotted time, this is not the time slot to give formal testimony on a public hearing matter, land use application, or comment on a pending application or proposal. Out of courtesy for all those who wish to speak, the city council requests each speaker limit their comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to give public comment? Nope? All right, seeing none, move on to consent agenda. Item eight, all consent agenda items are considered to be action items, consent agenda items are considered to be routine and are acted on with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the mayor or council member, member of city staff, or a set, citizen requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed on the regular agenda in a sequence determined by the city council. Any item on the consent agenda which contains written conditions of approval from the city of Eagle City Staff, Planning and Zoning Commission, or Design Review Board shall be adopted as part of the city council's consent agenda motion unless specifically stated otherwise. Is there anybody from the council that'd like to remove anything?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I'll go ahead, I know they're gonna ask for it anyhow, so I'll ask for 8P to be removed, so staff can present that.
All right, item eight, P. All right, is there anything else? Staff, do you have any? No? Public? No? All right. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda removing item eight, P?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ginsburg.
I'll make a motion to approve action item eight, uh, all the consent agenda items from A through T, with the exception of P. from A through T with the exception of P.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call?
Aye.
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 All right. Item eight, P.
Mayor, members of the council, um, Dave Jorgensen's here to request, um, the, the council to consider, uh, adding a site-specific condition for, um, this application, so I'll leave it to him.
Okay. If you can give your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dave Jorgensen, address fourteen two fifty-four West Battenburg Drive Boise. And thank you for, uh, pulling this item for us. We requested that, so we could address one item. We've had a lot of work on Skyview. I won't give into all of it unless you want to talk about it, because I respect your time, but I don't know that I've put more work in an application over the last six months than this one. Uh, we've accomplished a lot as it pertains to the bridge and the crossing. However, as such, we've ran into a conflict, and so we're asking for a little bit of, a change, and I'll explain why. Uh, per the city, uh, conditions of approval, a street is being added to our southwest area, and I'll show a map to articulate that, uh, to connect the Skyview to the Route forty-four subdivision and across the canal. Uh, we are, we did have to remove some units to accommodate that, and we've also reduced the size of irrigation pond as much as possible to still meet the City of Eagle's, uh, irrigation standards. But due to the anticipated traffic volumes on this road, ACHD is not allowing a narrower street section. We hope for that. They have told us no numerous times. And so, with that in mind, we're trying to still make it look right. And so, we went through the process with design review, and what our ask is, and you'll see it here shortly, is, is, um, we're trying to still fit the street and the pond as, as big as we can, but we're requesting an attached sidewalk on one side of the street. So, I'll show what, what this looks like here. So, this is what you approved. This is the Skyview subdivision, and it does not have the Flint Drive. If you follow my cursor, I think you can see it here. Uh, this road will now bend through, and this pond is narrower, and you'll see here, this is what we showed design review. So, we have a public street now all the way through and to, and it'll cross the canal. We've narrowed the pond to still meet the storage requirements, because we're on, on a rotation for the irrigation supply. However, this road, as shown here, was a little bit narrower than the full street section. So, what we're asking is on this left side, on the west side, having an attached, having attached sidewalk, still having trees. They'll just be behind the sidewalk. And then also, it attaches, rolls this way here, and we have some additional shrubbery for screening. So, if I zoom in here, I'll zoom in a little closer for you here. If you cannot see that good enough, tell me. I'll zoom in a little for, closer here. Is that close enough? Can you hopefully see that fine? So, we are showing, I'll come back one step here. So, we have the, the bridge crossing here, and it's attached on both sides of the bridge, and if the sidewalk isn't, because that's why you do the bridges, attached sidewalk. It'll remain attached all the way through until it can detach at this point up through here. We have a detached sidewalk where the homes are. So, all this will be detached sidewalk on the east side with the, uh, a- as per the plan as, as before, and we have the street trees all the way here on the east side. On the west side, again, we're asking for a change from what was approved by design review, and the changes are the follows. First of all, this species of tree is a little bit different. It's a water-tolerant tree, better than what was shown previously to the design review committee. It's a river birch, and it'll be detached behind the sidewalk, uh, the attached sidewalk being attached. And then we added another row of shrubbery on this side here, so we have actually two rows of shrubs on this side over here. We can't push the fence any closer to the north because of an existing irrigation easement and conflicts with the existing pipe on the north side. So, with that in mind, I'll stand for any questions. But we're asking for a change to the, uh, I guess I'll say this right, the, the sta- the, the report as appro- the findings as approved by the design review committee, which is what, uh, letter, uh, eight P is, and adding the condition, which would be condition number twenty-one, that we'll, uh, we're allowed to install the attached sidewalk and landscaping per the modified landscape plans I showed you today. It's date stamped to June thirteenth. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Yep. Councilman Pike?
Uh, one question, because I'll ask it to Mike either way. On the west side, on that, that fence next to the pond, wha- is there gonna be, um, uh, wrought iron fencing, uh, al- next to the sidewalk, or is it gonna be open to the pond?
Uh, Mr. Uh, uh, Mayor and, and Councilmember Pike, there's no fencing along the back of sidewalk here. This is be open between the sidewalk and the pond. Are you referring to the wa- the boundary?
Well, no, I was referring to the, the, the pedestrian side of the pond, uh, it'd be the east side of the pond. Um, yeah, I was wondering if there was gonna be anything to mitigate. I don't know how much width is there, since we, the request is for a reduction of the sidewalk, so.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Councilmember, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Pike, uh, we have six feet between the back of sidewalk and the pond.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's all I have.
And so, we're placing the, the trees as far back as we can to have a little separation. Uh, I think there's a foot and a freeboard, so maybe it's closer to eight feet to the top of water. Uh, they still build it with a shelf and then down, as you would normally do with these ponds anyway. Uh, that's the design.
All right, sorry. And a follow-up to that, because we had, you had to narrow the pond, did you have to make the pond any deeper to offset the, the, uh, collection volume?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Pike, it's as deep as we can go. Uh, it was already deep before. It's just narrower, the depth.
Okay, so you're losing volume then of storage capacity if you're narrowing it. So, I just didn't know if you had to go, if they allowed to go deeper or not, just to offset that.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Pike, you can see maybe here, uh, this long linear rectangles for the middle of the pi- of the pond, that's the only flat area, if you will. It's pretty much a V pond in this design here.
Okay. Any other questions? Brian? What's your pleasure?
Can you go back to that site's, uh, condition? Just throw it up there. There you go. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I was reading your mind. There you go.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Councilman Bond.
Uh, make a motion to approve consent item, uh, eight P, DR dash two-nine dash two-two, common area landscaping. Oops. Yeah. I'll just say Skyview subdivision, uh, by adding the site-specific condition number twenty-one, uh, relative to the modified site plan for Skyview.
I'll second it unless we need.
Motion second? Second? Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We will move on to, uh, public hearing item. There are none. Uh, public comment two. Uh, this time is reserved for the public to address our elected officials regarding concerns or comments they would like to provide to the city council regarding any matter up to and including any subject on the agenda with the exception of public hearing and land use items. Comments regarding public hearing and land use items need to be made during an open public hearing for said items in accordance with the Idaho Code. At times, the city council may seek comments, opinions regarding specific city matters, excluding public hearing and land use items during this allotted time. Out of courtesy for all those who wish to speak, the city council requests each speaker limit their comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that'd like to have public comment two?
Anybody?
Okay. All right. Item eleven, executive session, uh, seventy-four dash two oh eight, parentheses one. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move that we move into executive session, seventy-four dash two oh six, one, letters C and F.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, on that one, do we need to read what those are in the record, so?
I can, I can do that. Yeah, I was wondering. I'll do that. Okay, thanks. Uh, to acquire an interest in real property which is not a la- owned by public agency, to communicate, uh, and F is to communicate legal counsel for public agencies to discuss the legal ramifications of the legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet, um, being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. The mere presence of legal counsel at the executive session does not satisfy this requirement.
All right. Does the cast second concur?
Yes, it does.
Okay, moving to second then. Any more discussion? Roll call?
Aye.
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 Round of executive session. Any motions? No. Seeing none, we'll move on to item twelve, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? So, moved in second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries.